The October 8th, 2012 meeting of the East Penn district's board of school directors, everybody come to order, please rise and join me in closing the flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have no request to address the board this evening. We'll move on to approval of minutes, can I have a motion please? So moved. Alright, are there any corrections, adjustments, or comments on the minutes? Ms. Donches?
Yes, on page two, under Terry Richwine's remarks, it says either the books or the passages do that, and he said the books are not pornography because pornography is meant to sexually arouse someone, and either the books, and I'm pretty certain that he said neither of the books.
Okay, comment is noted. Any other? Ms. Fuller?
Let me just say I felt it was a masterful job of inspiring the board. Thank you, Ms. Fuller.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller, anything else? All those in favor of approving the minute with the comment, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, minutes are approved. Next item is the report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Thomas Seidberger.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, and I want to give the board the oral report of our Lehigh study council trip to Pittsburgh, University of Pittsburgh. About thirty, mostly superintendents and central office people, to our association with Lehigh University traveled to University of Pittsburgh last week, and I want to thank you publicly for allowing me to participate. We had outstanding two and a half days, and one of the things that we really don't talk about is the opportunity to network with our colleagues, and I think that's, that's one of the byproducts of this trip. I know Dr. Torme at one point had an opportunity to take a summer trip to Harvard about twenty years ago, but all the years that have gone on the Lehigh trip, this is one of the things that's most memorable, talking to fellow colleagues away from the office. But anyway, we were hosted by Dr. Kerr, Dr. Travato, and Dr. Waindo, all professors on the staff at University of Pittsburgh, and we had opportunity to interact with those three regarding University of Pittsburgh's principal certification program and their superintendent's fellow eligibility program. Very fascinating departure from what's going on in institutions around here like Brooks and Lehigh, East Drows, or some of the other programs, our people are involved, very practical oriented, and I think all of us were impressed that they moved people in and out with a commitment of four semesters to get both their principal certification and their superintendent's letter. A little interesting is that University of Pittsburgh doesn't have much of a relationship with the city of Pittsburgh, they're basically doing a lot of work with the Gates Foundation. Also later on, the first day, we had an opportunity to interact with superintendent from Fox Chapel. Again, very interesting because she went over to their STEM program, and I brought back information sharing with Mrs. Campbell and Mrs. Noack, and I like to think that our program mirrors theirs because they were basically starting in the elementary and middle school level, brought back a lot of documents that we'll share internally. We also had a chance to interact with the superintendent, because the exact name of the district used to be Caropolis, a western county, a little small district out by the airport, and her district is one of the early districts going through the teacher evaluation system, and it spawned a very powerful discussion about what the impact would be. And one of the things we learned, and I will share with the board, is that it's becoming clear throughout the state, this is the pilot districts, that due a teacher evaluation in a new format, speaking at least a total of eight hours per teacher, all the documentation, readings, preconferences, and postconferences, the time for reflection, and the time to get one done, so to speak, on the books, is about eight hours. So, for those who like math, can start to look at what we have to do with our professional staff, you look at, let's say, Dr. Moyer, and the number of staff members that he has in the whole lane, and then that does not negate Dr. Moyer from doing the prescribed number of evaluations for nonattending staff. And so, going through, we're very concerned as to what this is going to look like for us. My understanding is, again, Dr. Torme and I admitted, reminded me last meeting, that the state's going to come out with further refinements sometime in December regarding this process. So we're very concerned about the time requirement to get this, to meet these new requirements of law, so we'll keep you abreast of that. Again, very profound discussions, and I think all of us felt very concerned and admiration of districts such as Nassau, and Parkland, and Allentown that are going through the second wave of pilot districts. On Thursday, we had a fascinating day, we visited Upper St. Clair School District. And for those who don't know anything about Upper St. Clair School District, supposedly it's the highest performing high school in the state of Pennsylvania. Again, we were fascinated with their STEM program, what they did was, they actually charged kids, and they developed an overriding thought, the kids get a chance to go in every lab, and then actually construct their robot at the end of the week, it's a two-week period, a program four hours a day. Their teachers reach the program, they have other teachers, and they also assist students from other school districts. We were quite enamored with Upper St. Clair's leadership program, this district-wide program, but I felt very much at home because what their district has done, under the guidance of Dr. O'Toole, the superintendent, they've taken their leadership teams for a year, put that together in a package, sought and were granted help, approval for their efforts as well. So I felt really sure that this is another district that's like us in saying, you know, let's maximize the time that we have our administrators. And again, it's always good to go away from home and see other districts that are thinking the way you are doing. What was also very, I think, telling about Upper St. Clair High School when you walk in, in the main hallway, all their flags where they have international connections, and they run international partnerships, not only with students but with teachers, much like we did with Dr. Moyer last year, but on a grander scale, they were telling me to have students from Ireland to come about five weeks of the year, actually take up residence at Upper St. Clair, and have the teacher accompany those kids. Very impressive, and again, the overall impression, and the principal really cultivates those partnerships, and they have teachers traveling to foreign countries routinely throughout the year to build those partnerships. Mr. Pepperata, I think last meeting, we granted him permission to attend the secondary principals' conference, and he will be stopping and having further compensation with Dr. Boening, who is the principal of Upper St. Clair, and I think, again, these are, this is the value of this kind of trip, because I think Mr. Pepperata was interested in lots of things that are going on at Upper St. Clair, and I can only tell you that, I think they'll bring good things from our students and our staff back here. We're also impressed with their, and reportedly, we think ours is more descriptive, theirs was a little less, but their attention to assessment, I'm happy to tell you what they put out for superintendent's and report, this is what we have in the dashboard, and again, validation, why I think what, argument of transparency with the local test schools. I have to tell you, and I mentioned Mr. Ballard last week there, for those who are active in the Pennsylvania Schools Association, or Robert Bolus, if you don't know her, I think you might recognize her, Robert Bolus, she's the vice president of the Upper St. Clair Board, she also served as past president of Pennsylvania Schools Association, the National Schools Association. But again, as a superintendent, dear board members, stand up and talk passionately about what they value in the school district, and I'm pleased to tell you that, three things that I found at Upper St. Clair reside here in this district too. And that is a committed work of education to maintain all of their current programs, and they did that by inviting the goal of having a small tax increase last year, but also, they were happy to tell you that the teachers recognized that things changed, and they had some ready negotiation points with their staff, and it was just as we had with our teachers. And then, their great commitment to working with community groups, and being overall reaching out, and having a great relationship with the business community, the parent groups, and I feel that we're on the right track with that as well. One of the things we did find really impressive about this was their student-based program, they really work hard, mentor, and teach program, and they actually train lots of students, and they do lots of leadership, student governance, very accurate. And finally, one of the things that we were, I thought we might want to discuss back here at East Penn, when you walk in our high school, it's a real testament to their community. And for the first time, I've seen hall of fans before, but I've never seen three different ones of one building, and I think, again, it's a testament to their commitment, a hall of fame for academics, one for arts, and then one for athletics, so it's a triple-A district, academics, arts, and athletics, I think it's just like before. So we really want to thank Dr. O'Toole for the time that we spent, we also heard from the elementary principal, Dr. Professional Learning Communities, they really spend a lot of time with end-of-year students, and again, they were stoked on, and they presented us with a lot of documents that we can bring back, analyze, and then I'm going to talk to you about all of these documents tomorrow at our cabinet meeting, when our administrators gather together for a faculty meeting. So, it was a great trip, and again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to go and participate with my colleagues. This year, we received information that we have the following students have reached semifinal status in the National Marriage Scholarship Competition, and the following students are as follows: Daniel Prinjar, Terrence Colley, Thomas Fang, Ryan Jager, Connor Maki, and Niraj Padakul. So we congratulate all those fine young people, and wish them well as they move through the process. Today, the serve of all, let me know that Scott Shearer, who'd like to come and speak with the board on November 12th, so Mr. Ballard, your commission will put it on the agenda. It looks as if there may be a promising opportunity for further refinancing, where it more from, from Mr. Shearer. The good news about this timing is that if the board does feel it's an opportune time to look at more refinancing, we could do it in a compressed period of time, and unlike last summer, with the transaction, but over the budget years, it looks like this one could help us with the development of 2013, 2014 budget, which I think all of us would feel very good about. So, that's good news, let's just hope tomorrow it stays cooperative, and again, we'll hear from Mr. Shearer on November 12th. Last thing I want to talk about is, I think I mentioned last board meeting, that we spent time with Dr. Maribel, Mr. Lancy, Dr. Moyer, the admin, the parent concern committee, the state police staff, then Mr. Fornoli, Mr. Fornoli, right, the Fornoli Associates. We just received this report, I'm going to tell you about it, I will make it available to you, for board members, we're going to send you a PDF copy later on this week, we'll probably put up our website next week, we want to give it an opportunity for the council to go and get this report, because there's some recommendations from them as well, and I don't want Mr. Fossman to read about this somewhere else, so I'm going to be dropping a copy off of him tomorrow. Now, the good news is that each one of our walking routes was reviewed, and I can tell you that for all three walking routes, that the maximum a school district can score is thirty points, for each one of our walking routes, we scored twenty-six points. So I'm really happy with our plan, and there's some, I think, some good recommendations in here, one or two, that we might want to consider as we develop next year's budget, some minor changes, but again, we're going to make this available to the board and to the general public. But I want to thank especially again, Mr. Lancy, Dr. Maribel, and Dr. Moyer for filling the application, have this evaluation done, and I think, again, it will show our parents, assure our parents in a one-line area that we really are serious, do have a very good plan that comes from safer schools, Mr. Ballard is on that.
Thank you, Dr. Seidberger, are there any questions for Dr. Seidberger on his report?
Well, not a comment, just for the benefit of our audience, Dr. Seidberger, he used the term "hill," which is one of the many, many acronyms we use for Pennsylvania inspired leadership, can you tell just a little bit about that?
I'd say that inspired leadership is a requirement for certain administrators in the state of Pennsylvania that need to complete one hundred eighty hours over a five-year period of staff development, and the good news, as I mentioned last week, we now have seventy hours dedicated to our business, and so, two years, and two and a half years, we almost get our hill hours done. Strange thing is that hill is not related to good folks like Dr. Carrick, especially people, for some reason, they dodge the bullet there. Also, personally, though, all people are not in the critical, Mrs. Noack does not need hill certification, strange as it may seem, but what mostly superintendents, assistant superintendents, principals, assistant principals, other people, Mr. Mo is another person that doesn't have to be hill certified, but we make sure he's certified there. So, yes, it's an unfunded mandate, but let's hear that.
All right, move on to item two on the agenda, Ms. Donches has requested one item be held out, we'll do that as two A, so a motion for two under personnel, can I have a motion please on what's being held out, the PASBO transportation conference for Mr. Lancy? Under the educational conferences, it's in a great, I'll, is there a second? I don't hear a second. Okay, have a second on item two, personnel, is there any discussion on this item?
Could we ask to have an executive summary of Mr. Lancy's report when he returns?
We aren't on two yet, we're on two. Any discussion on item two, personnel without the conference? Ms. Burzl, will you call a roll please?
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye. We now have a motion to approve the educational conference for Mr. Lancy. So moved. Move the second. Ms. Donches, you want to add something?
Yes, could I request, would we request to make a motion to request, to do this to have Mr. Lancy give an executive summary of his report when he returns? Another transportation is a high part of the item for us.
I don't think we need a motion for that.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Any other discussion?
Ms. Burzl, is Mr. Ballard in? Mr. Hirsch.
Just for the future, you should only hold something out if you expect to vote against it, or you feel that there's a likelihood you might want to vote against, or you don't want to vote down the rest of the act. If there's just something you want to discuss related to that item, there's no reason to hold a separate motion. Thanks.
Ms. Burzl, will you call a roll please?
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
We now have a motion for the PSBA compensation analysis and market assessment for Act 93 compensation practices, by motion please. All right, discussion on this item. Mr. Stoltz?
Dr. Seidberger, I suppose.
Mr. Ballard, can you please direct Dr. Seidberger to explain to the public why this is the issue?
Thank you, Seidberger, I love you. I think compensation is always a key issue in any school district, because everyone, maybe everyone doesn't know, that Act 93, folks, although they have an opportunity to discuss the salary with the board, have a little bargaining rights with the board, however, one of the things that we've had since I've been superintendent is the tremendous amount of turnover and various elements of the organization. So, what this compensation study will do is to give us key information relative to similar positions not only in Lehigh Valley, but throughout districts that are like us in terms of A ratio, in terms of size. So at the end of the day, we will then have, our Act 93 agreement has currently spreads on salary, they have minimums, they have maximums. One of the things we'll be able to gauge is how accurate are we? Now again, I don't want to talk too much about this because the information we do get back will be confidential and have, be proprietary to us, but that's the intent. The Pennsylvania school boards will use a variety of instruments to look at positions and measure them against other standards. The people who will be completing this report have done over fifty of these reports statewide. I have talked to some of the superintendents and board members who have this done for their districts, they think the data is very useful as the board looks to define a compensation package with those people who are under Act 93.
Just one thing, Dr. Seidberger, I'd like to correct one thing you said, the material will be proprietary to PSBA as its author, it will be confidential to us because of its follow-up negotiations, so any other comments? Is there anyone else? Aye. Yep. Ms. Stoltz.
Is there any reason we couldn't do this study in this?
Yes, although we could do study, I don't think our instruments would be as precise as those of the experts from the Pennsylvania Schools Association. They have access to information we don't. We could possibly get the information from Lehigh Valley, however, we take an inordinate amount of time, well, in excess of a fee here, first to get information from districts that are like us. And I think, the other thing that we would have spending, we would spend a lot more than $4,100 for the funds, is finding an exact match for job descriptions, and that's the other thing we want to look at, are job descriptions, and find people, and look at compensation for people who are doing comparable work. So, I think, my answer is, yes, we could do more of that, I think the time that we would spend generating the report would be much greater than the fee that we're spending for that.
I also, my question timing of this study, didn't we just approve pay increases in Act 93 individuals, why are we commissioning another, commissioning another study, are we planning another pay increase in the near future?
That's up to the board of education, I can't comment. You do have to start helping up the budget in two months.
Well, that, Dr. Seidberger included an increase in the last budget of the same defense, and they offered X one. Is this something that we could bid out?
Well, you can always bid out, but I think, Pennsylvania schools, as you need to tell Mr. Shearer, because they are familiar with the data.
Well, I have concerns about PSBA doing it, because as I understand it, they're part of the U.S.'s pension program, and as such, salary is of course one of the things covered in that, and it might be a little bit of a conflict, and I guess, and seeing our colleagues can make reasons as well.
I mean, that's your opinion, I don't necessarily agree with that. But I won't make a motion to table until we have bid it out.
What is second?
Motion to table is not debatable. Ms. Burzl, will you call a roll please? If affirmative vote, we'll table the motion for a different time.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
No.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
No.
Mr. Pollock.
No.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
No.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Seven mays, two waters.
Motion still on the table? Mr. Earnshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. It's, having been involved in a number of Act 93 discussions, we sometimes operate someone in the dark, especially regarding new hires, so as Dr. Seidberger pointed out, we've had a lot of turnover in our Act 93 team over the last several years, as many people have reached retirement age, or they've had opportunities to move on to new opportunities in other districts, we've had a number of our assistant principals, and principals elsewhere, had some of our principals go on to central office administrators elsewhere. So it's been great to see that we've been able to give that kind of training that our employees can get desirable to other districts. The downside, of course, is that we have to backfill. And having this kind of a study will really help us set those parameters in a much more rational way, I think, for making those kinds of decisions. It's not simply whether or not we increase existing employees' pay, I expect that over the next few years, we'll have a few more of our people leave, as I said, they're talented, they're in demand elsewhere, we can't offer them the opportunities to pass with five assistant principals at the high school and one principal slot, not all of them are going to be able to get that opportunity to lead our high school, so if they have an opportunity to lead another high school, I think it's great for them to be able to take advantage of that. Having this will really help us, I especially like what PSBA talks about, kind of scoring
We can always bid out, but I think pensionary schools, as you need talent, because they are familiar with the data.
Well, I have concerns about PSBA doing it because as I understand it, they're part of the East Coast Pension Program. And as such, salary is of course one of the things covered in that. It might be a little bit of a conflict when it was in saying that our colleagues can pay increases as well.
I mean, that's your opinion. I don't necessarily agree with that.
But I won't make a motion to table until we have bid it out.
Move the second.
Motion to table is not debatable. Ms. Burzel, will you call a roll please? If affirmative vote, we'll table the motion for a different time.
Mr. Barker.
No.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Nay.
Mr. Rhodes.
No.
Ms. Donchus.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
No.
Mr. Pollock.
No.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
No.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Seven nays, two ayes.
Motion still on the table? Mr. Earnshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. It's having been involved in a number of Act 93 discussions, we sometimes operate somewhat in the dark, especially regarding new hires. So as Dr. Seidenberger pointed out, we've had a lot of turnover in our Act 93 team over the last several years. Many people reached retirement age or they've had opportunities to move on to new opportunities in other districts. We've had a number of our assistant principals and principals elsewhere, had some of our principals go on to Central Office of Administration elsewhere. So it's been great to see that we've been able to give that kind of training that our employees can be desirable to other districts. The downside, of course, is that we have to backfill. And having this kind of a study will really help us set those parameters in a much more rational way, I think, for making those kinds of decisions. It's not simply whether or not we increase existing employees' pay. I expect that over the next few years, we'll have a few more of our people leave. As I said, they're talented, they're in demand elsewhere. We can't offer them the opportunities to pass with five assistant principals at the high school and one principal slot. Not all of them are going to be able to get that opportunity to lead our high school. So if they have an opportunity to lead another high school, I think it's great for them to be able to take advantage of that. Having this will really help us. I especially like what PSBA talks about, kind of scoring a job so you can have a more like-to-like comparison. When I was hired at the company I currently work for, my job title was engineer. I was in R and D. I was writing computer software and my degree is in marketing. So I didn't really know what to call myself or how to compare myself to anyone else and what kind of title I should put on my business card because I wasn't an engineer, even though my job title was. And so being able to have this comparison, putting their actual duties and matching them up across districts, I think will be a very valuable resource for us. $4,100, I don't think I've ever seen a insulting agreement anywhere for any topic is this low. I think if we were to bid it out, we would spend a lot more time drawing up bid documents and end up with much higher bids, if any other bids at all. So I think that would be kind of a waste of our time there. This is a reasonable price, provides very good information that we can then use for our next one. Thank you, Ms. Earnshaw. Ms. Donchus.
I would have also liked to see the analysis to be bid out to other companies or organizations. $4,100 may be a reasonable cost, though by not advertising for other proposals, we do not know for sure if another company would have competitively bid for the opportunity to do the work. I do share concern about the PSBA being the education lobby organization, concern about the objectivity. And really, we compare, we can compare to other school districts, but every school district's needs and every school district's budget and resources are different. And really, at the end of the day, we just have to provide the greatest atmosphere and interesting work to do. If we don't have the resources to, and sometimes, like in business, sometimes you know that you don't, you would love to give everybody more, but sometimes you just can't. And I'm not sure if this comparison will, you know, give an opportunity to do that. I think that with ending out soliciting out for the bids, that we haven't done much utility.
Mr. Barker?
I'd just like to comment on the sending out the bids. We're only talking about $4,000. If we save 10%, $400, and I'm sure we'd like us at least $400 to put together bid proposals and run bidding process. So for something this size, especially since we've heard that the product from this company is good from people that have this done before, I'm comfortable proceeding with the PSBA analysis.
Ms. Fuller?
There are several comments indicating that this survey is intended to be used for salaries. Information we're receiving may help us understand if indeed we're in the right parameter and if we may offer less than the dollars. It is an indication, it is a collection of data, and it is information to help us guide our negotiation.
Thank you.
My observation from industry regarding the cost is this is exceedingly cheap for what's being requested. I concur with Mr. Barker that the amount of time spent in trying to draw up a bid specification and then reviewing bids and determining qualified organizations and stuff like that would easily waste $1,000 in addition to what's here, knowing what kind of time is involved doing these kinds of things. This is not required to be put out to bid because it is professional services and it's under the state requirement number for that. And I have no problem with PSBA as an organization. They have served the people of Pennsylvania and the school boards of Pennsylvania for well over 75 years with never a hint from any credible organization that they have shown any particular bias. Anyway, no matter what pension plan their employees are paid under or part of, and I find it extremely disingenuous to be making those kind of claims without any backing whatsoever.
Ms. Burzel, will you call a roll please?
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Nay.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Donchus.
Nay.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Seven ayes, two nays.
Thank you, Ms. Burzel. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of members of this board to a tax increment financing committee. Before I make the motion, I want to explain a couple of things to the public. This is an exploratory committee. It does not commit any entity involved to creating a tip or approving a tip. This committee is comprised of the municipalities and the school districts involved in potential tax financing of a development. It is chaired by the Lehigh Valley Industrial Development Authority. The committee will inspect proposals, look at the various financing options available, and will then determine whether or not it's recommended for all of the entities involved to go forward with the actual creation of the tip. At that time, there would then be a motion by the Lehigh Valley Industrial Authority to create a tip. That motion would then be forwarded to the individual taxing bodies, and those taxing bodies would then, by voting affirmatively on that final motion, would then create a tip. All of this will take several months. It will not be something that will occur overnight, and we need to have the representation on the board for this committee to investigate whether or not it makes sense for East Penn to consider the tip. And that's what the purpose of the committee is. So in that regard, I would like to move that East Penn Board of School Directors designate Thomas Seidenberger, Superintendent of Schools, and Mr. Kenneth Barker as primary delegates to this committee, with Ms. Francie Fuller as an alternate as the East Penn School District Representatives to the Hamilton Crossings Tax Increment Financing Committee. Can I have a second, please? So move the second, discussion. Ms. Donchus.
I just have a clarifying question. I wondered if I could address something to the supervisor as far as the timing?
You can ask him any question you want.
Do we get this to an official level? Under the TIP Act, this is in a document that we received, there's no date on it or source, but it says, "Under the TIP Act, the redevelopment authority or industrial development authority is to make an initial formal presentation to the government bodies of all municipalities and school districts that levy taxes within the TIP district. Each affected municipality and school district then is obligated, under the TIP Act, to designate a representative to serve on the TIP committee and so forth." And I just wonder, is the timing not that each of the authorities have to be presented to first, like all three to be presented to first, and then the committee can read it? Or is that in the order that we are doing it? It's all been taken from the beginning.
My recollection was there was already a presentation made to Lower McCunchen Township, and this representation, I believe at the last meeting, was a presentation then to be made to Lehigh County as well.
So that one hasn't been made yet? I wondered, does that sound bad?
I don't know if it has or hasn't. I accept your view that it hasn't. I don't see a problem with that. It can't go any further unless the actual presentation, of course, is made. So the answer to the question is yes, it can be done in this order.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Stoltz?
I see Ms. Donchus has further questions. If she would still like to, or as far as saying, I will let her keep it and I'll get any questions.
Well, I will let her keep it if she has further questions. She didn't seem to indicate she had further questions.
I just, I'm in favor of you having a... I did have one other one.
Okay. Continue on, Ms. Donchus.
At what point will we get proof from Mr. Pearson's firm and the Gold River Group as far as their financing? That when will we be provided their financial background that proves that this financial assistance is needed and that the TIP isn't being sought just because it's a government program out there to be taken advantage of?
Nice presentation to this exploratory committee, and that's what they're supposed to determine.
Okay, and then they will be reporting that to us?
That's right. They come back with a recommendation in general to the Lehigh Valley Industrial Development Authority, Go or No Go, then the Lehigh Industrial, yeah, Lehigh County Industrial Development Authority. And then they decide whether or not they're going to approve it. If they approve it, then a third set of motions comes to the three taxing bodies, which have to be approved separately, and all of those are dependent on the recommendation of the committee.
And all of the openings of the books are made to that committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Stoltz?
I likewise have a question to the solicitor, but this is on actually two separate matters. The way I'm reading this, we are obligated to appoint someone. We have no choice at this stage. We must represent the district's committee. I don't see that this... I don't think you have, because the board is judicial. Oh, okay. I also, aside from any moral concerns I have involved in the relearning here, have concerns about a committee which is going to have representation of a municipal body that has some property tax involved. Do you have any, or can we catch them, obviously has some property tax? I'm curious as to why they have representation of the law requires.
They must go to, the law requires that the municipality, the school district as well as the county must be, it does not differentiate with any one tax. I suppose the theory is that at some point, if a tip were to be created, let's say, in the four-year period, ten years, waking up, so twenty years ago, there is a possibility that within that time, the municipality doesn't have the tax. Doesn't want to get that.
Well, Mr. Pollock, I ask the solicitor. I'm using that logic, could the state also have representation because they may at some point in the future have property tax? Although I fear that I may have just given an idea by saying so.
So I won't touch your comment, I won't speak to your comment, but no.
The law simply dictates which layer of the government is also involved.
As I began stating at the last meeting when I was correct about the state of the concern, that was not the time to be discussing the agreement or disagreement of the tip. I have concerns about us getting involved in a, about getting government involved with business. Largely government interference in free market has led to our current economic situation at nearly every level of government. To my mind, this is picking market winners and losers and giving the benefit to one particular set of businesses that are developing a car. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to suggest, I would do my own best to fight this every step of the way and see that we don't take part in interfering with the free market act. I wonder how, as a school board, we can tell our teachers to instruct our students on the free market capitalist society that made our country great when we ourselves are approving, assuming we have heard of this tonight, government interfering with the business and free market process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoltz. Any other comments? Mr. Barker?
I would just point out that we're not making a decision to support or not to support the tip here. We're basically putting representatives on a committee to get backs. And I would like to have the data to make our decision if a tip were to come before the board. So I think the time to debate the merits of the tip are when we have the data on what the tip is. That's my comment.
Mr. Earnshaw?
I agree with Mr. Barker on this issue. We also, I think, as a school board, need to have not only the data from the committee but also the voice on it. If we don't have representatives on the committee, they can recommend whatever they want, which may or may not be in harmony with the goals and objectives of the district. If we have no voice, then we will not have any choice in what the recommendation that is brought to us is. So I think it's a valuable effort for us to be involved in discussions. We can debate the civics and economics involved. I would point out that in my understanding of our current economy, the government interferes at all levels, sometimes for good, sometimes for ill. The natural tendency of a market is to a monopoly. It was determined a number of years ago that that's not good for consumers or for free markets, and yet that is the natural tendency for them. And so we stop, the natural tendency for corporations is to maximize their profits, and they would do that if they could by colluding with one another and defrauding the consumers. So the government, again, interferes with that to put reasonable restrictions. So to say that we should not be involved in commerce in any way is perhaps a naive oversimplification of what our market is like and what the realities would be if government did not.
Ms. Burzel, will you call a roll please?
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Donchus.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Nay.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Eight ayes, one aye.
All right. Well, there are three developments on the legislative area that I would call to your attention. The first, I sent you the copy out, and it's available on the web, and if anybody doesn't have a copy, send me an email, I'll send them a copy. It's the Independent Independent Fiscal Office Report on the Current Property Tax Relief Bill, so-called, that are currently being discussed in the Pennsylvania Legislature. And remember, the Independent Fiscal Office is a creation of the legislature to provide the legislature with details and financial information on bills that they're considering. And that report clearly points out that as presently constituted, the, neither bill provides enough revenue to replace property tax entirely as a way. Now, there possibly could be some tweaks, I suppose, to bills by rounding the rates up or adjusting something in the sales tax, though I don't know what. But basically, they have a one and a half billion dollar deficit to try to make up what they're attempting to do. And that's going to be very difficult to accomplish, I think, under the present circumstances. But you should take a look at that Independent Fiscal Office Report, and it also indicates that the deficit grows over time. So that's another problem that's there. And I would also point out to those who are seeking property tax elevation for some, from some of these bills, that all of these bills talk about the state taking the money and doling it out to the school districts, but nothing is discussed as to the formula for doing that. And the devil is all in the details. It doesn't say whether or not they're going to take state sales tax statewide and then cut it up by some measure, or try to take it by county and portion it that way. And that's one problem with the bill, because as the old restatement of the golden rule is he who has the gold rules. And if the state is passing out the gold, you can just imagine who's going to be ruling everything. So local school boards have a consideration in this situation right now, because if we don't have any money other than what the state gives us, we have no choice about what we do in many cases. And the other thing that I would like to point out in both of these bills, and I pointed it out to Representative Simmons, who's serving on the House Committee of pointed it out to Representative Simmons, who's serving on the House Committee, that's reviewing these bills, currently, businesses pay property taxes that offset school costs for individuals. If the business does not pay sales tax, such as it has a resale permit, or it doesn't pay internal sales taxes, and if it doesn't, if it isn't a sole proprietorship, so it doesn't pay personal income tax, which is all these bills talk about, I'm talking about corporate income tax. Unless you change the corporate income tax rate to make up for the amount of money that these businesses are paying in property taxes, they suddenly get a windfall of no property taxes and no increase in any tax that they pay. So that burden now has to be shared by the people who do pay sales tax and personal income tax, and that's mostly you and me. So that's one of the considerations that I brought to Representative Simmons' attention. It's also mentioned in the IFO report. So if you take a look at that, you'll find it interesting. I'd also like to point out two, I will call them interesting developments that have just occurred recently. While there is discussion about renewing debate on a charter school bill in the legislature. First of all, the Department of Education came out with new AYP calcs for charter schools, and suddenly, a large number of charter schools were now making AYP. Unfortunately, they hadn't gotten approval from the Department of Education, the federal department determines how those calculations are supposed to be made, to use this new alternative method, which isn't the same method as they use for public schools. And so it appears that the department has artificially inflated the AYP results for charter schools this year by some coincidence. And another thing that has occurred, which has some very strange timing behind that, I think, is the Act One index calculation. The Act One index calculation is actually specified in Act One as being based on one year's index basis numbers. Due to a change in the law regarding welfare payments, and not welfare payments, but jobless payments, they were to go to a three-year averaging basis. And this lowered the number for what the state had to make in terms of payments increases for those calculations. It also, when used apparently improperly in the Act One index calculation, lowered the index from what it should have been at 2.2% according to Act One's language, to 1.7%. So that's under some scrutiny right now. It's been brought to the attention of PSBA, and I'm sure that their legal department is having discussions with the Pennsylvania Department of Education. But specifically in Act One, it stated that the index would be based on a one-year rolling average, not a three-year. And that law was never changed when they changed the other law. So there is some problem there. As I indicated, there's some talk about, in this abbreviated session, trying to get in charter school authorization laws that would make it easier for charter schools, having the state approve them, that would be fine if the state were paying for them. But I will point out that for every charter school that goes on in the East Penn School District, local taxpayers are paying 80% or more of its expenditures through our contribution to the charter school, not the state. The state pays less than 20% of their charter school cost, and residents of East Penn are paying 80%. And if the local school board, which the taxpayers can seek repress from, can't be involved with any charter school decisions, then I think the state should be paying all the freight, so that our local taxpayers, in a sense, if they don't have any input, don't have any cost either. And that's something you should be talking to your representatives about. That's all I have for tonight on that. Is there any other questions or comments on the legislative field? Mr. Bader?
I'd just like to comment, one of the things you sent out on the property tax bills, one of the other ramifications was that the property taxes are federally deductible and the alternative taxes are not, so it exposes Pennsylvania taxpayers to additional federal tax as well.
That's correct. There's no deduction for personal income tax or sales tax, except that you use the sales tax instead of the, and everybody might have to shift to that, and for a lot of people it'd be a recording nightmare. You get a property tax bill straight forward, trying to keep track of your sales all year to what percentage you did is kind of difficult. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the bill list, number one. Have a motion, please? Is there any discussion on the bill list? Ms. Donchus?
I have one question about the check. I'm sorry, I missed my notes, I forgot to send it in. On page five, check number 17040, Visual Systems Group, for fifty-six thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety
Visual Systems is a Polycom distance learning equipment setup, a refresh.
I feel like, Mr. Bader.
I'm sorry. That Visual Systems Group does Polycom distance learning equipment setup, A12, for all ten buildings, to take classes across buildings, distance learning trips to museums, anywhere around the world. That's a refresh, the equipment is probably 10 years old.
We have students that take advanced, let's say, mathematics in either elementary schools, middle schools, vice versa. So this is an upgrade that will allow those classes, I guess that's clear?
It's a bridging system. It makes a virtual classroom, so, for instance, we have one class at one of the middle schools, we have four elementaries connecting to that one math class. We have the students sit down in front of their Polycom units, they go to the virtual classroom, they take the math class. We're also connecting both middle schools to our high school, but this equipment will also allow us to connect to museums, to field trips, communicate with other districts, which we've already been doing, and to districts around the world that have similar equipment. It's Polycom standard.
This is, we're replacing some equipment that we already have?
Upgrade, replacing equipment that's probably eight, nine, maybe 10 years old, long before I was here.
I remember a couple of years ago, I believe, that you said foreign language is still over. Is that the same, is that used now?
Foreign language, we talked a little bit about E-PAL, the Digital PEPAL system. We also talked about using Moodle and connecting Moodle with other classrooms. That doesn't have the visual component of actually taking a class. Right now, where students can actually almost sit in the classroom at the high school, take that math class, interact, see the interactive whiteboard, see their classmates, ask somebody a question from the other classroom, it's visual and it's audio, and interactive with whiteboards.
Any other questions? Ms. Burksell, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Ernshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Ms. Don.
Aye.
Mr. Bader?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Item number two was held out by request of the, Ms. Donchus, budget transfers post audit for June 30th, it's a five. Can I have a motion, please? So moved. All right. Questions? Ms. Donchus?
Yes, I guess to Dr. Seidenberger, if I could. When was the audit completed?
Sometime late August. I don't know exactly, sometime late, maybe you want to explain the process, this is your fault. This is a yearly?
Yeah, the auditors come in August to review the books, but then some things are still pending while they're still working on transactions, and some transactions still came through in September. So just about a week or two ago, they really finished their basic work and gave us these budget transfers. They recommend these transfers and have them included in their working documents, and we just approve them, and we add the extra digits at the end so that we can push it to our system. So we're factored to review the transfers without having seen the full final audit? Yes, I mean, we approve transfers normally throughout the year all the time to cover accounts, and there were extra expenditures that were taken back from July and August for things that were actually received and owed for in June. So the auditors have to take those transactions back to the last fiscal year, so we have to cover them with budget transfers like this.
You have some important suggestions?
I just didn't seem like a responsible thing to, that could we move to hold these transfers?
You can do anything you want, but why would you complicate the operation of the district for something like that, which you're going to review in the audit report?
This is always the way it's been done since before I started here over 30 years ago. The auditors always give these to us when they give us the audit working documents, and then we work on together, building the management discussion and analysis, which becomes part of the audit report. This is a step in the process of closing out the books for last fiscal year. And we could not close out the books then until, if this is not done? Right, we can't close out the book. Right.
Until we close out the books, we can get the final audit report. Anyone else? Ms. Burksell, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Ernshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Mr. Polatana?
Aye.
Mr. Bader?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Ms. Don.
Does anyone have any objections in the binding items 7.3, 4, 5, and 6? Have a motion to that effect, please? All those in favor? Uh, this, excuse me. We'll get this over with. Ms. Burksell, will you call a roll, please?
Uh, Mr. Bader?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Ernshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Polatana?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Ms. Don.
All right, move on to unfinished business. Mr. Stoltz, you had a motion today?
Yes, my motion, if I remember correctly, I think it's the School Board Directors direct the administration to prepare a report on webcasting school board meetings.
Is there a second for that motion?
No.
All right, discussion? Mr. Urshon?
Well, it would be helpful to have some idea of what exactly Mr. Stoltz would like in that report. If, I mean, a report on webcasting, it could be a simple sentence, no, the board does not currently webcast its meetings, so that would fulfill requirements of the motion as stated, so if he could give some more elaboration of what he's looking for, I think that would be helpful.
Mr. Stoltz?
I would be interested in seeing what would be required for the East Penn School District's webcast or report meetings along the lines of either the Lehigh County Board of Commissioners or the N.A.S. Borough Council, for example, of which webcast meetings. I would like to remind my fellow board members that this is not a vote for or against webcasting, this is just to find out what it would take. And the majority of you, at least in the campaign last year, of the board expressed support for webcasting meetings, so I'll ask you to hold your promise to the board.
Dr. Seidenberger, if I might, to state that there was a report about four years ago?
There was, and we've looked at some things, so to be fair to everybody, we certainly can do something in this sort of, regarding the board.
Okay? You're saying you're going to prepare your report?
I'm saying, we've looked at something like this when this issue came up last year. I'd have to go back, up Mr. Blasey, Mr. Ritter, Mr. Loewen, and upgrade some things. I mean, we looked at a schematic about three or four years ago. And, you know, this room isn't the use for, to do those kind of things, so we'll go back in and we'll look at that. But I'm saying, we've already laid some ground, I'm not going to say I have to start fresh, but we have to update it.
I would also like to have the solicitor comment on that report on legal aspects. It's liability of the district, which is something. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Burksell? And Ms. Urshon?
One of the things we've had to do on occasion is move our board meetings out of this room into the cafeteria when there's particularly large crowd. So we have to include provisions if we decide that that's going to be something that we do, is webcast our meetings on a regular and routine basis. We'd have to have some kind of a contingency plan for handling a move to another venue. So, Dr. Seidenberger, if you would consider that, I appreciate that as well.
Mr. Stoltz?
I would like to address Mr. Ernshaw's concerns by pointing to that camera right there. If, it could be something as simple as us having our own camera, if a member of the public can do it for what I assume is virtually no cost, and I would think that the school district can as well, and I'm open to seeing what the administration has, but I have every confidence that it will resolve in these other opportunities.
So the question is, if the administration said that they would do a report, do you still make your motion?
I would like a revote for it, and there's a motion on the floor, and I don't think we can.
So I was asking, Mr. Ernshaw? I do table the motion. Is there a second? Okay, motion table is not debatable. Ms. Burksell, will you follow the roll on affirmative vote? Tables the motion.
Mr. Ernshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
No.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Polatana?
No.
Mr. Bader?
No.
Mr. Stoltz?
No.
Ms. Hyde?
No.
Mr. Ballard?
No.
Seven names, two names.
All right, the motion's still on the floor. Two other comments? Ms. Burksell, will you call the roll on the motion?
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Mr. Bader?
Aye.
Mr. Polatana?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Ernshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
No.
Six ayes, one aye.
All right, we have a report prepared by the superintendent. Is there any new business to come before the board this evening? Mr. Urshon?
Mr. Ballard, we've had much discussion lately about summer programs. I'd just like to express a note of support for some of the summer programs my children were involved in this year. It's too late this evening, I'll just make a few comments if I may. My oldest daughter is in the humanities class at the high school this year. Fantastic program. She was required to read a number of books, including The Odyssey and Cold Mountain, which is a more contemporary novel, patterned after The Odyssey, and then do a paper comparing the plot themes and the characters between the two books. She had to visit an art museum, give, write up her general impressions of the art museum, select one artwork and purchase a postcard of it, or something smaller than a sheet of paper anyway, postcard was recommended, and then write up an analysis of that particular piece of artwork, how it resonated with the lines, the color, the mood, information about the artist and the composition itself. She then had to find and listen to a number of compositions that were classical in nature, and I had a great time sharing some items from my collection, as well as discovering a few new ones with her along the way. Having that opportunity has been a very enriching experience for our family. I took my daughter to the art museum, we had a very pleasant afternoon, talking about artwork, sharing ideas and thoughts back and forth. So it's just been very impressive to me, the dedication of our teachers, structuring programs, stretches our students, but also prepares them for the coursework that they're going to be tackling during the year. My other children had other course, or other preparatory work that they had to do for their courses, reading anything from classical novels to mathematics review packets. I was very impressed with the amount of work that the staff put into helping our students prepare over the summer, and I'd like to just publicly express my appreciation to them for that. It certainly helped my children get off I was very impressed with the amount of work that the staff put into helping our students prepare over the summer, and I'd like to just publicly express my appreciation to them for that. It certainly helped my children get off to a much better start with this, having gone through that preparatory work. Thank you, Ms. Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw, for your positive report on our education program. Mr. Barker?
I'd just like to comment, I had a chance to attend and meet a teacher night in the high school for the first time, and I was very impressed with the level of enthusiasm of the teachers, both for their profession and for teaching the kids, and what they meant, the faculty.
Ms. Fuller?
I'd just like to pick up on Mr. Earnshaw. I have two sons who both took humanities and graduated, and I had to go through a conversation among some of their friends that they were humanities graduates, and how indeed it felt like it was a new club, and they didn't realize how valuable it was before they got to college, and they were just like us and everyone else.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. Mr. Stoltz?
Um, and just going back to what happened earlier, I would invite Mr. Earnshaw and anyone else who feels that meddling in the free market is a good idea to go see at the Trump party, which comes out this Friday, and maybe it's a good time to drink.
Okay? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
Sorry, we had a executive session prior to the meeting discussing personnel, confidential matters, and the legal matters. Now, as I can, motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
If you're both happy, I.
The solicitor will mention a couple of facts that we have determined about this particular issue. The chair is actually correct. Number one, it is debatable. Number two, the chair gets the first, prefers to talk in. If he wants to, the chair can make rebuttal. Number one, go around. That is Robert's rules, and I didn't know. I've been educated as well. But I think it's also important to understand exactly what you're debating. When you're debating, it's not an underlying issue whether the books should be removed from the optional reading list. What you're really supposed to be debating is whether or not you should be, the motion can even be entertained tonight. It may sound kind of strange, but that's really the limited issue. And for, towards information, anybody who's public, who may not be aware. The school district does have a policy 109, which talks about resource materials. And included in that policy are a couple of things that may help guide you in your debate, which includes the following statement that responsibility for the selection of instructional materials to be used by the district is delegated by the board.
Would you care using the microphone, please?
I'm not so loud, I can't believe we can't hear.
Please, thank you.
Included in policy 109 are a few statements, are a few things that are of importance. Number one, it says that the responsibility for the selection of instructional materials to be used in the district is delegated by the board to professionally trained personnel employed by the district. That's number one. And number two, there is a process which allows for any member of the community to make a, who wishes to offer a formal written inquiry concerning any written specific instructional material. And that if such a written inquiry is made, the process requires that it be referred to a committee. And the committee includes the assistant superintendent who chairs the committee. It includes the appropriate supervisor and/or teacher, a librarian, a building administrator, a board member, and two members from the general public. And after that committee takes a review, it is required to issue a written response to that inquiry. And makes a specific recommendation to the board, which means that it would tend to come back before the board to either accept or reject that recommendation. I have now confirmed, and I did not know this, but there actually was a, a member of the community has indeed submitted a written inquiry this evening, that indeed has happened. So were you to follow board policy, it'll now go through the process of being reviewed by this committee and then come back before the board. So what I'm trying to remind you is, there is a process. Really what you're limited tonight is not the underlying issue. That apparently is coming back to you. If it's not resolved after the committee makes its written response. If you're really debating whether or not you should eventually entertain the, entertain the motion that's listed on the agenda for tonight, if that makes sense to you. Okay, I've had my say on the particular. So it'll be better now, one, each get one shot. Mr. Golds?
I'd like to start off by asking the solicitor if he agrees with Mr. Ballard's connection that the motion is the problem.
If I agree that he believes, you have board policy. And board policy sets forth a certain sequence of events. If you intend to follow board policy, then you would not entertain the motion tonight. So it's a question of whether the board believes it has the, it can waive board policy. The chair and I have had a disagreement over the years. I'm not changing the way I interpret this. I say board policy can always be waived by the board. Okay? I will not change my opinion. It's always been my opinion. Or chair disagrees with me. But that's up to the board as a whole to decide whether or not you're going to waive the policy. But again, the limited issue tonight is whether or not you intend to, not debating the underlying motion, but whether or not you intend to follow board policy in the first instance. Have thought everybody agree?
To an extent. The chair also seemed to make at least the, veiled, not certainly veiled, but saying possibility that we're open to legal action if we move forward and take votes.
And as the person who probably would be defending this, we're both sure. Real easy for somebody to file lawsuit. You pay to file in the beginning, yet you file away as to whether or not it would be successful. That's another issue. I can't give you an opinion for either way as to whether or not it would be a successful lawsuit.
Do you think that we could possibly be open to a lawsuit for the corruption of morals minors given content that is included?
I'm not going to, it's not my decision whether or not the board ultimately.
I'm not asking for your decision.
You did, but you did. You did. Well, it's not my place to render a legal opinion at this point as to whether or not you're open up to the corruption of morals. Great. If you answer that at the appropriate time, I would suggest I might answer probably, based on the warnings and things of that nature. And again, I must say, I'm not here as the educator. I'm here as the board. I haven't read the books.
Are you finished with your statement, Mr. Ballard? No. I'm just getting warmed up. I can't have them. Now anyone could believe that simply not including this on the suggestion some reading this is censorship. This is a motion to pull it from the libraries. This is a motion to suggest that you ban it from the community and prevent anyone from reading this. Heck, I'm aware that children see, you know, worse things on the internet. I'm not naive. I was in high school six years. This isn't censorship. This is common sense that a government body should not be recommending explicit sexual content to minors, to 14, 15, and 16-year-old students.
The question is whether or not the motion is about following policy or not, not about the underlying motion thing. So you need to speak to the.
Well, one, Mr. Ballard, Mr. Ballard, one of your contentions was that this is censorship. And I'm refuting my contention.
I did not state anything about this is censorship. I described several, oh, let's go on. You just finish, I'll, not speaking of motion tonight.
Well, if you're going to deny things that you said, I think I'm going to yield the floor and just go to the table later on. Thank you.
Anyone else? And Mr. Bodder?
How long does the, the point of the review usually take?
Well, we just got it tonight, so we'll have to process it tomorrow, a week or two.
That's the full review and we'll get a report in a week or two? That seems very comforting to me. Someone ought to read the book.
You asked me, and, you know, we just got it tonight. So we'll have to marshal our resources. Tomorrow, pick a time when people can get together, people who not on the community have an opportunity to read the books. So we'll do this as quickly as we can.
Mr. Ballard? Where did we, Mr. Ballard? So it seems like the next, it seems like we will be, this issue is done yet even if we do not close on the underlying motion today, we're going to get this back in our laps in a short period of time. Well, before the summer reading list comes into play again. It doesn't seem like there's a pressing need to pursue this now because we're going to have to discuss it later and we'll have more information. So I don't see a pressing need to not follow board policy in this case.
Do you follow Allen's remarks?
They, in good signs, the makeup of the committee, I guess, scripture. I haven't said anything.
Well, I think you had a.
Let's go ahead.
I think you had a description of all of the committee.
Yeah, we know.
Okay. Well, there's certainly be, it's a book about high schools, so high school staff will be guaranteed. Keep in mind.
We need to decide to keep it.
Yeah, so. Well, we're gonna have to talk about that tomorrow.
The Chairman of the Committee generally decides to keep or.
You don't have the right to decree, so either Dr. Torma and I have done this, we're gonna have to talk tomorrow about who's gonna lead this committee. We also let, solicit a board member of participation. So through challenges we have before, we want that to participate.
Mr. Bodger, put the question, sorry.
Ms. Donchess?
I don't know specifically because the, I was not part of the group that made that decision last time. I can tell you that we'll look for parents, if there's some parents who's in the gave us a call off bond. But we'll, we'll look for people who are willing to read the book every one. That's what.
Mr. Stoltz? All this evening, I was waiting for this moment because I feel that we have to follow our policy. As a school board, we are a creature of policies we create. If we ignore them at our own whims, then they have no meaning whatsoever. And this time, we need to follow our policy. We want to change our policy, and certainly change our policy. And I think right now, I haven't gone through this with the school board before, but it seems like a reasonable policy. And one that allows for the addressing of people's concerns on both sides of the issues. And then we'll be presented with a statement or a opinion as to where we should go with this. And then we'll get a chance to vote on that and people can have their say. But without that policy, we are leaving ourselves open. If we just ignore it, then we're putting ourselves in an uncomfortable position for me as someone who's in charge of protecting the school district as much as possible. So I am going to vote to have this sort of policy at this point.
One correction to, at least to Mr. Ballard's comments. He says we don't require students to read any specific book. For ninth grade honors students, they are all required to read Charles Dickens' Great Expectations. My ninth grader had that great enthusiasm this summer. But she did have optional titles to choose from in addition. She had to read two other titles from the list. So to say we never require any student to read any particular book is actually incorrect. We do, for some of our students, require specific titles. Titles and questions are not required. That said, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Stoltz that we have a policy. Policy seems like a reasonable one. It will give us the opportunity as a board to receive, I hope, a well-rounded opinion of both our teachers with the literary merits of their work, as well as the public on not only the literary factors, but also the community factors. I think the community standards are much different than some of the standards that I grew up with these days. When I was a child, children under 17 simply did not go to R-rated movies. I don't think that's the case anymore. I remember my mother saying, when she was a kindergarten teacher, for students coming in and saying, oh, we saw a movie last night. My mom, well, what was it? It was a R-rated movie. So getting that perspective from the community, I think will be very valuable to us. I hope we'll have a balanced treat, treat us from the committee. It gives us a nuanced view of it instead of soundbites. I have not read the works in question, so I'm looking forward to hearing from the people who have read the works and are willing to weigh it in its entirety instead of from a single page excerpt. So I will be in favor of allowing the committee to do its work and giving us a more full understanding of the ramifications of the.
Any other final comments? I will end my comments with simply pointing out that the quotes I gave you from the Supreme Court were a specific case where a school board removed a book from the reading list and it got taken to the Supreme Court and the result was a statement that has established pretty definite case law with these kinds of cases, that school districts have to have a process that is established, regular, and facially unbiased for the review of controversial materials. That is not a motion made on the floor. Is how any of that reviewed? That's all I'm gonna say. We will now take a vote upon, appeal the Chair. A yes vote, acceptable, denies the Chair's motion, and you go on to debate the motion. A no vote says you do not appeal the ruling of the Chair. Is that clear to everyone? Okay, Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll for you?
Mr. Ernshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
No.
Ms. Donchess?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller? Mr. Palatana?
No.
Mr. Bodger?
No.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hoy? Mr. Ballard?
No.
AKA is one of them.
All right, we will proceed on to the last item under unfinished business, which is the motion of Mr. Stoltz. Do you wish to make that motion again?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Dr. Seidberger, will you comment on this motion, please?
Again, another interesting motion. I can just tell you that I sit on boards of several organizations, and I think everybody knows here. Vice President of Middle States Association of Colleges and Schools. And Hillel Levinson is our Executive Vice President. And once a week, I get a memo from Hill with an update. And I know that it doesn't go out to the other members of the commission, it comes out to the executive committee. Also, on the Board of DeVinci, and our subcommittees that we sit on, and we receive information from the executive director. And the board president, and they don't go to all the trustees. I also engage with other professional organizations that officers get emails. Also, I teach a class at Lehigh, and I have taught a class at Lehigh Leadership. And one of the things I've always lived near and dear to my heart, and I practiced as a superintendent for 24 years, was that the superintendent ought to have a special relationship with the board. And I believe that happens when the superintendent writes an update, or superintendent's report, as I call, to the board. There are certain pre-decisional information that the board may need to help them with a decision. There's certain background information. And I certainly am in the business long enough to know what the differences between a member of the board and a communication with the public. I think they're very different audiences. I really do. I sincerely believe that. If I want to write an opinion piece or letter, or put something on the district website, there certainly have enough capable people, or I've done that myself in the past. Lots of times, I will sit here at a board meeting and basically repeat a lot of what I wrote. But still, I reserve the right to do that. And I reserve the right to write a superintendent report. And for that, Mr. Ballard, I'm old school. Can I admit that, I'm old school? I believe there should be a special relationship between a superintendent and the board. That is it. It has nothing to do with transparency. It has everything to do with communication. Me to you and back. And if I want to communicate with the public, I'll find a venue which we do that.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Seidberger, Mr. Stoltz, will you explain your motion, please?
Finally. As I said a couple weeks ago, and I proposed this, there's information that would be considered confidential. It could be redacted if the federal and state government does that all the time with public records. I don't think that I'm asking the superintendent or any administration to go out of the way. I'm asking that, you know, for the people that's involved, those that's online, the rest of the agenda. I think that it's interesting that Dr. Seidberger said that he reserves the right to communicate with us and in essence, not to give it to the public.
Well, Dr. Seidberger, well. Dr. Seidberger, you can comment at the moment I have the floor.
We may employ the superintendent, but the public pays the superintendent. And anything you have to say to us that is not to be marked confidential should also be shared to the public. They have a right to know because they're paying your $166,000 a year salary plus health benefits that most people in the private sector will never see. So that's my logic behind asking this to be posted. It's not a lot of work, and I didn't even hear you say that it was. Simple pro-transparency move. I'm sure that someone will question my, what's the same. I don't really see how I gained anything politically by asking. Thank you.
Other persons wishing to comment?
Ms. Donchess?
I too would like to see the parts of this superintendent's report that can be made available to the public. Right, so whether they see them, I guess I often think that it will be repeated in the verbal superintendent's report. However, I guess what you're saying, Dr. Seidberger, is when you're giving your superintendent's report, I guess technically here in the public, you're just giving it to us. And the public has to hear it. And then the written one is just to us. But there are things in the written report that I think would be nice to have repeated to what the public can hear. And that they are subject to representation, for those things that can be shared.
Other comments? I will make a comment. Any corporation, in communication with its board by the chief executive, has certain information that is pre-decisional. In fact, may not ever come to a decision with board. And the only thing that's required in a public corporation to be made public is decisions. And the information used to come to those decisions in terms of contracts, other factual documents that are provided to the board for their review. The superintendent's report to the board often contains, mixed in, inextricably, confidential information, pre-decisional information, and information that could compromise legal positions of the board and the district if it were potentially made known on any kind of timescale. Like as soon as he's reported it to us, it has to go on the website type of thing. There are some things that might be suitable for redacting three to six months later, but not necessarily right now, given the decision speed with which we make any decision. So if there is a problem with the superintendent's report to the public, it is possible for a board member to question the superintendent on topics that are related to his report and supposedly react to it that way if, indeed, it will not compromise pre-decisional or confidential material. We get confidential material all the time in the superintendent's report, ranging from material that would be student confidential, to material that would be employee confidential, to material that would be legally confidential in terms of our legal strategy. So if there's something missing somehow in the superintendent's report to the public, I am not convinced. So I'm not in favor of this motion. Number second round. Is that you, Mr. Stoltz?
Oh, I'm Mr. Ernshaw, and I have the jury. Mr. Ernshaw?
One of the challenges we have with any communication we get is that the superintendent can speak to the board in jargon. He can make reference to Act 48, or Act 8, or Act 93, or Act 50, or Act 1, or any of a number of other acts that have been passed. And we are supposed to, as school directors, be able to understand such jargon. Many of us have failed ourselves in training. Those that have certainly could, and if you don't understand it, we're certainly entitled to ask. If the superintendent were providing information for the public in a form that the public would understand, I think it would take more context and more time and effort to make sure the message was crisp and communicating exactly what is intended. I think sometimes in casual communications, we're not always as careful to make sure that our words cannot be misinterpreted. Anything to the public would have to have a higher standard of care. And I think what that would tend to do is discourage the superintendent from spending the extra time to compose the information. I personally appreciate receiving that information when it's appropriate for me to have it. And I wouldn't want to put up any barriers between the board and the superintendent. And I don't think it's an appropriate motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ernshaw. Mr. Stoltz?
I would ask, however, my fellow board members vote on this. They don't vote on it based on their opinion of me. I realize that I'm a furer under the saddle, I'm a born in your side, and I have this, it's pretty much my personal support. I would ask you to vote on this strictly based on experience. This is not going to cause extra work or any significant extra work. Unlike Mr. Ernshaw, I think public is smart enough to look up what various acts mean. They're already online, I think Google searches just took away. And it would be a step towards transparency. If there's something that the superintendent feels needs to remain confidential and sound within the report, I'll try to stand that decision redacted. Don't, don't, don't believe that it's going to arm our negotiating strategy or anything along those lines. Again, I just ask that my, my fellow board members, Ian, that Ian is basically not basing this on reflection. Thank you.
Mr. Paul Allen?
A question, if we get the report and see that there is something that we think might be worth following, but the public, I'm sure if we're discussing with Dr. Seidberger, that he would consider that and give his opinion. But it's possible that we can still.
I'm always open to that, Mr. Stoltz. I will make one other observation before we go to the vote. That is that it is very difficult to maintain communication between a CEO and a board when you have to prepare one set of messages for the board and one set of messages for the public. The natural tendency over a period of time will end up being paraphrasing one set of messages and leaving out, in many cases, or shortening, or hinting around some of the candid material that appears in Dr. Seidberger's current report to the board about certain internal issues and matters that the board needs to be aware of. For example, without naming any particular situation, it is possible for an employee situation to develop which might require a hearing before the board. And the confidential memorandum might tell us that we might be required to have this meeting. That is not something that you come out in public with. Because it's employees, for instance, it was employee doing the appeal. The employee has the right to have the hearing closed, not published. So all kinds of communications like that that slowly get buried under a process of saying that everything that the superintendent sends to the board, redacted or not, has to be subject to the, somebody's making a decision what to redact and what not, put it up on the site. It just goes against communications principles internally. It goes against practical human organizations. We, contrary to some allegations, are transparent as much as we can be. There's a lot of stuff we can't be transparent against because there are actually laws that restrain us rather than the public about what we can and cannot say in many cases. There are, a board member could disclose information that could put that board member into threat of a federal criminal offense for knowledge that the board. into threat of a federal criminal offense from knowledge that the board may have. We can't be fooling around, as it is, on the basis of some mythical lack of transparency. This board is far more transparent than most. And we try to handle all of our stuff in public and we go to great lengths to insist that certain things occur in the public. The others in the past that I've voted in the valley have managed somehow to not do it in public. And I don't think this particular motion has significant merit and I think it has significant downsides that we should consider.
Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. High.
No.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Irvin Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
No.
Ms. Donchess.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
No.
Mr. Pollock.
No.
Mr. Volker.
No.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Seventh names, two lives.
All right. At this time, we will proceed on the announcement. We had an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel, which we negotiations, and the confidential matter. On Wednesday, September 26th, all schools and offices will be closed. And our next board meeting is on Monday, October 8th. I have a motion to adjourn.
Is it allowed in this business?
If it is a substantive motion that is required to be put on the next meeting's agenda, why don't you submit, Ms. Bertschel, to put it on? We have never, at the beginning, any members request to put a motion on the agenda.
That's fine. I would ask if I'd be allowed to put the motions on.
You'll see it in the agenda once published, Mr. Stoltz.
There really is no end to the lengths that he will go to try to prevent the public knowing what's going on at these meetings.
Mr. Stoltz, you are casting aspersions on members of the board.
Oh, you cast aspersions on me all the time, Mr. Bertschel.
Mr. Stoltz, you will please refrain. If you want to make a motion, go ahead. I will declare it improper because the public hasn't had a chance to review it and then it will be on the agenda, the only notice of it will be on the agenda for most people. Go ahead and make your motion.
I note that the district's principal board of directors, direct administration, to prepare a report on broadcasting board meetings.
The motion is improper. It will be on the agenda for the next meeting under unfinished business. Any other? Ms. Donchess.
I have a question. When will the revenue expenditure budgets be prepared, who wants to hear the year, and the general fund management, like the kind of a backup of the past year and budget books?
When the audit is finished, when we get the audits.
Okay.
Something is tomorrow. We...
Any other questions?
Okay, a motion to adjourn.
Seven minutes.
All is in favor?
Aye.
We use... The solicitor will mention a couple of facts that we have determined about this particular issue. The chair is actually correct. Number one, it is debatable. Number two, the chair gets the first, is the first to talk in. If he wants to, the chair can make rebuttal. Number one, go around. That is Robert's rules and I didn't know. I've been educated as well. But I think it's also important to understand what you're debating. What you're debating is not an underlying issue whether the books should be removed from the optional reading list, but you're really supposed to be debating is whether or not you should be, the motion can even be entertained tonight. That may sound kind of strange, but that's really the limited issue. And for words, information, anybody in the public who may not be aware, the school district does have a policy 109, which talks about resource materials. And included in that policy are a couple of things that may help guide you in your debate, which includes the following statement, that responsibility for the selection of instructional materials to be used by the district is delegated by the board.
Would you care using the microphone, please?
I'm not so glad. Can't believe we can't hear.
Please, thank you.
Included in policy 109 are a few statements, are a few things that are of importance. Number one, it says that the responsibility for the selection of instructional materials to be used in the district is delegated by the board to professionally trained personnel employed by the district. That's number one. And number two, there is a process which allows for any member of the community to make a, who wishes to offer a formal written inquiry concerning any written specific instructional material. And that if such a written inquiry is made, the process requires that it be referred to a committee. And the committee includes the assistant superintendent who chairs the committee. It includes the appropriate supervisor and/or teacher, a librarian, a building administrator, a board member, and two members from the general public. And after that committee takes a review, it is required to issue a written response to that inquiry and makes a specific recommendation to the board, which means that if it intends comes back before the board to either accept or reject that recommendation. I have now confirmed, and I did not know this, but there actually was a, a member of the community has indeed submitted a written inquiry this evening, that indeed has happened. So, we're going to follow board policy. It will now go through the process of being reviewed by this committee and then come back before the board. So, what I'm trying to remind you is there is a process. Really what you're limited tonight is not the underlying issue. That apparently is coming back to you. If it's not resolved after the committee makes its written response, if you're really debating whether or not you should eventually entertain the, entertain the motion that's listed on the agenda for tonight, if that makes sense to you. Okay? Okay? I've had my say on the particular subject matter. Now, one, each gets one shot. Mr. Stoltz?
I would like to start off by asking the solicitor if he agrees with Mr. Ballard's assumption that the motion is a problem.
If I agree that he believes... You have board policy. And board policy sets forth a certain sequence of events. If you intend to follow board policy, then you will not entertain the motion tonight. So, it's a question whether the board believes it has the, it can waive board policy. Chair and I have had a disagreement over the years. I'm not changing the way I interpret this. I say board policy can always be waived by the board. Okay? I will not change my opinion. It's always been my opinion. Or chair disagrees with me. But that's up to the board as a whole to decide whether or not you're going to waive the policy. But again, the limited issue tonight is whether or not you intend to, not debating the underlying motion, but whether or not you intend to follow the board policy in the first instance. Have thought our fight clear?
To accept. Chair also seems to make at least the veiled, not so firmly veiled, I should say, possibility that we're open to legal action if we move forward and take votes.
As the chair's opinion as to whether or not if you don't follow your policy, can you be subject to a possible lawsuit?
And as the person who probably be defending this, what does your opinion?
Real easy for somebody to file a lawsuit. You pay to file in the meeting, you have to file away as to whether or not it will be successful. That's another issue. I can't give you an opinion for either way as to whether or not it would be a successful lawsuit.
Do you think that we could possibly be open to a lawsuit for the corruption of morals of minors given content that is included?
I'm not going to. It's not my decision whether or not the board ultimate...
I'm not asking for your decision.
You did. But you did. You did. Well, it's not my place to render a legal opinion at this point as to whether or not you're open up to the corruption of morals of minors. Nice timing. Great. If you answer that at the appropriate time, I would suggest an answer probably, you know, based on the warnings and things of that nature. Again, I must say, I'm not here as the educator, I'm here as the board. I haven't read the books.
Are you finished with your statement yet, Mr. Bertschel? No. I'm just getting warmed up. I can't fathom how anyone could believe that simply not including this on the suggestion to some repeating this is censorship. This isn't a motion to pull it from the library. This is a motion to suggest that we ban it from the community and prevent anyone from reading this. Heck, I'm aware that children see, you know, worse things on the internet. I'm not naive. I was in high school six years ago. This isn't censorship. This is common sense that a government body should not be recommending explicit sexual content to minors, to 14, 15, and 16-year-old students.
The question is whether or not the motion is about following policy or not, not about the underlying motion thing. So, you need to speak to the...
Well, one, Mr. Ballard, Mr. Ballard, one of your contentions was that this is censorship. And I'm refuting my contention.
I did not state anything about this is censorship. I described several... Let's go on. You just finished. I'll, uh, not speaking the motion tonight.
Well, if you're going to deny things that you said, I think I'm going to yield the floor and just go to the table later on. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ian, Mr. Buckner?
How long does the full review usually take?
Well, we just got it tonight, so we'll have to process it tomorrow, a week or two.
That's the full review and we'll get a report in a week or two? That seems to be a bit of a break to me and someone else to read the books.
You asked me, Ian, you know, we just got it tonight. So, we'll have to marshal our resources tomorrow. Pick a time when people can get together, people who are not on the committee have an opportunity to read the books. So, we'll do this as quickly as we can.
Mr. Pollock Allen.
Where are we? Mr. Lockup, I've done, yeah, okay. So, it seems like the next, it seems like we will be, this issue isn't done yet, even if we do not close on the underlying motion today, we're going to get this back in our laps, in a short period of time, well, before the summer reading this comes into play again. So, it doesn't seem like there's a pressing need to pursue this now because we're going to have to discuss it later and all that information. So, I don't see pressing need to not follow board policy in this case.
Mr. Buckner, you have a question?
Yeah, you can do besides make up a, maybe it's a description. I've said, I... Well, I think you had a...
Yes, go ahead.
I think you had a description, it's on the committee. Yeah, we know. Okay. Well, there's certainly be, it's a book about high school, so high school staff will be guaranteed. If I...
What do you mean, we decide to keep it?
Yeah, well, we're going to have to talk about that tomorrow.
The chairman of the committee generally decides to keep or...
We don't have a director of recruitment, so neither Dr. Tormand I have done this, we're going to have to talk tomorrow about who's going to lead this committee. We also let, solicit board member participation. So, the two challenges we have before, we need board members participating.
I don't know specifically because the, I was not part of the group that made that decision last time. I can tell you, you know, we'll look for parents, if there's some parents interested in that, give us a call off. We'll, we'll look for people who are willing to read the book, number one. That's my...
All this evening, I was waiting for this moment because I feel that we have to follow our policy as a school board. We are a creature of policies we create. If we ignore them at our own whims, then they have no meaning whatsoever. And this time, we need to follow our policy if we want to change our policy, because certainly change our policy. And I think right now, I haven't gone through this with the school board before, but it seems like a reasonable policy and one that allows for the addressing of people's concerns on both sides of the issues. And then we'll be presented with a statement or an opinion as to where we should go with this, and then we'll get a chance to vote on that and people can have their say. But without that policy, we are leaving ourselves open. If we just ignore it, then we're putting ourselves in an uncomfortable position for me as, as someone who's in charge, protecting the school district as much as possible. So, I'm going to vote to have this going policy at this point.
One correction to, at least to Mr. Ballard's comments. He says we don't require students to read any specific book. For ninth grade honor students, they are all required to read Charles Dickens' Great Expectations. My ninth grader had that great enthusiasm this summer. But she did have optional titles to choose from in addition. She had to read two other titles from the list. So, to say we never require any student to read any particular book is factually incorrect. We do, for some of our students, require specific titles. The titles in question are not required. That said, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Rose that we have a policy. The policy seems like a reasonable one. It will give us the opportunity as a board to receive, I hope, a well-rounded opinion of both our teachers with the literary merits of their work, as well as the public on not only the literary factors, but also the community factors. I think the community standards are much different than some of the standards that I grew up with these days. When I was a child, children under 17 simply did not go to R-rated movies. I don't think that's the case anymore. I remember my mother saying, when she was a kindergarten teacher, her students coming in and saying, oh, we saw a movie last night. Well, what was it? It's made some R-rated movies. So, getting that perspective from the community, I think will be very valuable to us. I hope we'll have a balanced treat, treat us from the committee. It gives us a nuanced view of it instead of soundbites. I have not read the works in question, so I'm looking forward to hearing from people who have read the works and are willing to weigh it in its entirety instead of from a single-page excerpt. So, I will be in favor of allowing the committee to do its work and giving us a more full understanding of the ramifications of our...
Any other final comments?
I will end my comments with simply pointing out that the quotes I gave you from the Supreme Court were a specific case where a school board removed a book from the reading list and it got taken to the Supreme Court. And the result was a statement that has established pretty definite case law for these kind of cases, that school districts have to have a process that is established regularly and facially unbiased for the review of controversial materials. That is not a motion made on the floor without any of that review. That's all I'm going to say. We will now take a vote upon an appeal of the chair. A yes vote, acceptable, denies the chair's motion, and you go on to debate the motion. A no vote says you do not appeal the ruling of the chair. Is that clear to everyone? Okay, Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Irvin Shaw.
Aye.
Hey.
Mr. Rhodes.
No.
Ms. Donches.
Yes.
Ms. Fuller. Mr. Pollak.
No.
Mr. Barker.
No.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hye. Mr. Ballard.
No.
Eight days to one.
All right. We will proceed on to the last item under unfinished business, which is the, uh, motion of Mr. Stoltz. Do you wish to make that motion again?
Uh-huh.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All right. Uh, Mr. Dr. Seidberger, will you comment on this motion, please?
Again, another interesting motion. I can just tell you that I sit on boards of several organizations. And I think everybody knows here, I'm Vice President of Middle States Association of Colleges and Schools. And Hill L. Levinson is our Executive Vice President. And once a week I get a memo from Hill with an update. And I know that doesn't go out to the other members of the commission. It comes out to the executive committee. Also on the Board of the Vichy, and there are some committees that we sit on and we receive information from the executive director. And the board president, they all go to all the trustees. I also, um, engage with other professional organizations. Officers get emails. Also, I teach a class at Lehigh and I have taught a class at Lehigh Leadership. And one of the things I've always lived near and dear to my heart, and I practiced as a superintendent for 24 years, is that the superintendent ought to have a special relationship with the board. And I believe that happens when the superintendent writes an update, or superintendent's report, as I call, to the board. There are certain pre-decisional information that the board may need to help them with a decision. There's certain background information. And I certainly am in the business long enough to know what the difference is between a member of the board and a communication with the public. I think they're very different audiences. I really do. I sincerely believe that if I want to write an opinion piece or letter or put something on the district website, there certainly have enough capable people. I have done that myself in the past. Lots of times, I will sit here at a board meeting and basically repeat a lot of what I wrote. But still, I reserve the right to do that. And I reserve the right to write a superintendent report. And for that, Mr. Ballard, I'm old school. Can I admit that? I'm old school. I believe there should be a special relationship between a superintendent and the board. That, that is it. It has nothing to do with transparency. It has everything to do with communication. Me to you and back. And if I want to communicate with the public, I'll find a venue which can do that.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Seidberger, Mr. Stoltz, will you explain your motion, please?
Finally. Um, as I said a couple of weeks ago, I proposed this. There's information that would be considered confidential. It could be redacted. The federal and state government does that all the time with public records. I don't think that I'm asking the superintendent or any administration to go out of the way. I'm asking them to, you know, with a few clicks of a button, post this online, the rest of the agenda. Um, I think that it's interesting that Dr. Seidberger said that he reserves the right to communicate with us and in essence, not to give it to the public.
Well, Dr. Seidberger, well... Dr. Seidberger, you can comment at the moment I have the floor.
We may employ the superintendent, but the public pays the superintendent. And anything you have to say to us that is not to be marked confidential should also be shared with the public. They have a right to know because they're paying your $66,000 a year salary plus health benefits that those people in the private sector will never see. So that's, that's my logic behind asking this to be posted. It's not a lot of work and I didn't even hear you say that it was. Um, simple pro-transparency move. I'm sure that someone will question that. It's the same thing. I don't really see how I gained anything politically by asking. Thank you.
Another person is wishing to comment. Ms. Donches.
I too would like to see other parts of this superintendent's report that can be made available to the public. Right, so, um, whenever we see them, I guess I often think that it will be repeated in the verbal, um, superintendent's report. However, I guess what you're saying, Dr. Seidberger, is when you're giving your superintendent's report, I guess technically you're in the public. You're just giving it to us and the public gets to hear it. And then the written one is just to us. But there are things in the written report that I think would be nice to have repeated to when the public hear it, so that they are able to take a reservation with those things that can be shared.
Other comments? I will make a comment. Any corporation, the communication with its board by the chief executive has certain information that is pre-decisional. In fact, may not ever come to a decision with board. And the only thing that's required in a public corporation to be made public is decisions and the information used to come to those decisions in the terms of contracts, other factual documents that are provided to the board for their review. The superintendent's report to the board often contains mixed in, inextricably, confidential information, pre-decisional information, and information that could compromise legal positions of the board and the district if it were potentially made known on any kind of timescale. Like as soon as he's reported it to us, it has to go on the website type of thing. There are some things that might be suitable for redacting three to six months later, but not necessarily right now, given the decision speed with which we make any decision. So if there is a problem with the superintendent's report to the public, it is possible for a board member to question the superintendent on topics that are related to his report and supposedly be automatically made that way if indeed it will not compromise, uh, pre-decisional or confidential material. We get confidential material all the time in the superintendent's report, ranging from material that would be student confidential to material that would be employee confidential to material that would be legally confidential in terms of our legal strategy. So if there's something missing somehow in the superintendent's report to the public, I am not convinced. So I'm not in favor of this motion. Number second round. Is that you, Mr. Stoltz?
Oh, I'm Mr. Bertschel. I have the turn.
One of the challenges we have with any communication we get is that the superintendent can speak to the board in charge. He can make reference to Act 48, or Act 80, or Act 93, or Act 50, or Act 1, or any of a number of other acts that have been passed. And we are supposed to, as school directors, be able to understand such jargon. Many of us have availed ourselves in training. Those that haven't certainly could. And if you don't understand it, we're certainly entitled to ask. If the superintendent were providing information for the public in a form that the public would understand, I think it would take more context and more time and effort to make sure the message was crisp and communicating exactly what is intended. I think sometimes in casual communications, we're not always as careful to make sure that our words cannot be misinterpreted. Anything to the public would have to have a higher standard of care. And I think what that would tend to do is discourage the superintendent from spending the extra time to compose the information. I personally appreciate receiving that information when it's appropriate for me to have it. And I wouldn't want to put up any barriers between the board and the superintendent. And I don't think it's an appropriate motion. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Stoltz?
I would ask that when my fellow board members vote on this, they don't vote on it based on their opinion. I realize that I'm a fur on the saddle and a corn on your side. And I have this as pretty much my personal evidence for it. I would ask you to vote on this strictly based on experience. This is not going to cause extra burden or any significant extra burden. Unlike Mr. Bertschel, I think I'll look at smart enough to look up what various acts mean. They're already online. I think Google searches just click away. And, um, it would be a step towards transparency. If there's something that the superintendent feels needs to remain confidential and is not within the report, I'll, I'll trust in making that decision. Redacted. Don't, uh, don't believe that it's going to arm our negotiating strategy or anything along those lines. Again, I just ask that my, my fellow board members, you have this based on, not based on, as far as my opinion, please. Thank you.
Mr. Pollak.
A question. If we get the report, we can see that there is something that we think might be worth following. But the public, uh, sure, if we're discussing with Seidberger, that we would consider that and give us credit. But it's possible that we can still...
I'm always open to that, Mr. Stoltz. I will make one other observation before we go to the vote. That is that it is very difficult to maintain communication between a CEO and a board when you have to prepare one set of messages for the board and one set of messages for the public. The natural tendency over a period of time will end up being preparing one set of messages and leaving out, in many cases, or shortening, or hinting around some of the candid material that appears in Dr. Seidberger's current report to the board about certain internal, uh, issues and, uh, matters that the board needs to be aware of. For example, without naming any particular situation, it is possible for employee situations to develop which might require a hearing before the board. And the confidential memorandum might tell us that we might be required to have this meeting. That is not something that you come out in public with because it's employees, for instance, it was employee doing the appeal. The employee has the right to have the hearing closed, not public. So all kinds of communications like that that slowly get buried under a process of saying that everything that the superintendent sends to the board, redacted or not, has to be, uh, subject to the, somebody's making a decision what to redact and what not, put it up on the website. It just goes against communications principles internally. It goes against, uh, practical human organizations. We, contrary to some allegations, are transparent as much as we can be. There's a lot of stuff we can't be transparent against because there are actually laws that restrain us rather than the public about what we can and cannot say in many cases. There are, a board member could disclose information that could put that board member into threat of a federal criminal offense for knowledge that the board may have. We can't be fooling around with this on the basis of some mythical lack of transparency. This board is far more transparent than most. And we try to handle all of our stuff in public and we go to great lengths to insist that certain things occur in the public. The others in the past that I've noted in the Valley have managed somehow to not do in public. And I don't think this particular motion has significant merit. I think it has significant downsides that we should consider. Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hye.
No.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Bertschel.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
No.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller. Mr. Pollak.
No.
Mr. Barker.
No.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Seven days to one.
All right. At this time, we will proceed on to the next business. We have an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel, negotiations, and a confidential matter. On Wednesday, September 26th, all schools and offices will be closed. And our next board meeting is on Monday, October 8th. I have a motion to adjourn.
Uh... Is it allowed in this business?
If it is a substantive motion that is required to be put on next meeting's agenda, I would just submit, Ms. Bertschel, to put it on. We have never, at least any members request to put a motion on the agenda.
That's fine. I would ask if I'd be allowed to put one, put the motion down.
They'll see it in the agenda when it's published, Mr. Stoltz.
There really is no bounds to the lengths that you will go in trying to prevent the public knowing what's going on in these meetings.
Mr. Stoltz, you are casting aspersions on members of the board.
Oh, you cast aspersions on me all the time, Mr. Bertschel.
Mr. Stoltz, you will please refrain. If you want to make a motion, go ahead. I will declare it improper because the public hasn't had a chance to review it. And then it will be on the agenda. The only notice of it will be on the agenda for most people. Go ahead and make your motion.
I move the D. S. N. School Board of Directors, correct the administration to prepare, uh, to prepare a report on red casting of the meeting.
The motion is improper and will be on the agenda for the next meeting under unfinished business. Any other? Ms. Donches.
I have a question. When will the revenue expenditure budgets be prepared? It wants to be at the year and the general part, like the kind of a backup of, uh, of the, uh, past year and budget books.
When the audit is finished, we'll get the audits.
Okay.
Something is tomorrow, we'll get it. Any other questions? Uh, okay, a motion to adjourn. Is that within the time? All those in favor?
Aye.
Leading this committee.